I would like to call to order the city council meeting for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for August 12th, 2024. Would you please stand as you are able and join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag?
(inaudible)
Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll of the members?
Jenny Snell.
Present.
Scott Ohm.
Here.
Rachel Holtein.
Amanda Weaver.
Here.
Cory Stites.
Here.
Janice Hoppe.
Present.
Dan Larson.
Here.
Leah Dozeman.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Counselors in your packet, you have city council meeting minutes for July 22, 2024. Are there any changes or corrections to be noted in the minutes? Seeing none, the minutes stand, oh, excuse me. Seeing none, the meeting stand approved as presented with our thanks to the clerk. Are there any changes to be noted in the agenda? Counselor Dozeman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to postpone Agenda Item Number Eight for this evening.
Thank you. Are there any objections to that? Seeing none, we will, we will not continue with Agenda Item Number Eight tonight. We have no proclamations and ceremonies. We're at our public's right to speak. Has anyone signed up online? Thank you. And if the record would show that Counselor Holtein has joined us, thank you. I have no one signed up to speak under public's right to speak, so we will go to Agenda Item Number One. We'll be starting Agenda Item Number One in just one moment.
Thank you for your patience.
Counselor Holtein, would you please introduce Agenda Item Number One whenever you're ready?
Yes, I'd like to introduce Council Bill Number 132024, Anordinance Amending Section 26 dot six, excuse me, 26 point 646 F of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Regarding Approval of Non-Conforming Accessory Dwelling Units. At issue, the proposed ordinance extends the grace period to legalize existing dwellings that may qualify as accessory dwelling units, ADUs, from August 15th, 2024 to August 15th, 2026.
Thank you very much. This is an ordinance on second reading. It is a public hearing. It is not quasi judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing. Mr. Goff, we have a staff presentation on this item.
Yes.
Okay. Director Mikulak.
Thank you. Just as a reminder, we had a longer discussion about accessory dwelling units earlier this summer. That was in early June, and we had discussed the patterns that we've seen over the last two years since we allowed ADUs. At that time, we talked about the grace period, and we obtained consensus to extend that for another two years, which will allow us to build on the success that we've seen in legalizing some of the existing units that qualify for ADUs. That is the purpose of the ordinance tonight. We will be back before you later this year or early next year to talk about how we might need to tweak our ordinance in order to comply with other state regulations that are new to us this summer. But in the short term, we're only extending the grace period, and we'll be working on a continued education campaign. So if anybody comes to you, or if anybody's listening and has a unit that may qualify as an ADU, we have a quick and easy pathway to legalization, and we'd love to talk to folks. Thanks.
Thank you very much. I have no members of the public who have signed up to speak on this item, so I will go to questions of staff from council. Are there any questions of staff? Okay. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. And Counselor Holtein, may I have a motion on this item?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 132024, Anordinance Amending Section 26 dash 646 F of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Regarding Approval of Non-Conforming Accessory Dwelling Units. On second reading, order it published and that it takes effect immediately.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Hoppe. Do we have discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
All ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you. We will now go to Agenda Item Number Two. Mayor Protim Stites, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number 14 dash 2024, Anordinance Submitting a Ballot Question to the Voters of the City at the November 5th, 2024 Special Municipal Election to amend the Wheat Ridge Home Rule Charter related to building height at the former Lutheran Hospital campus.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Oh, you want to go ahead and read the at-issue statement.
At issue, the Lutheran Legacy Campus LLC Master Plan was adopted in 2021, and implementation of the plan's vision requires the city charter be amended to modify the building's height limitations of the campus. This ordinance sets the ballot language for the November 5th election, which is due to the Jefferson County Clerk and Recorder on September 6th.
Thank you. This will be an ordinance on first reading to set the date, time, and location for a public hearing. Will the clerk please, may I have a motion on this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Protim Stites, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number 14 dash 2024, Anordinance Submitting a Ballot Question to the Voters of the City at the November 5th, 2024 Special Municipal Election to amend the Wheat Ridge Home Rule Charter related to building height at the former Lutheran Hospital campus.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Oh, you want to, go ahead and read the at-issue statement.
At issue, the Lutheran Legacy Campus LLC Master Plan was adopted in 2021, and implementation of the plan's vision requires the city charter be amended to modify the building's height limitations of the campus. This ordinance sets the ballot language for the November 5th election, which is due to the Jefferson County Clerk and Recorder on September 6th.
Thank you. This will be an ordinance on first reading to set the date, time, and location for a public hearing. Will the clerk please, may I have a motion on this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Protim Stites.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 14 dash 2024, Anordinance Submitting a Ballot Question to the Voters of the City at the November 5th, 2024 Special Municipal Election to amend the Wheat Ridge Home Rule Charter related to building height at the former Lutheran Hospital campus. On first reading, order it published. Public hearing set for Monday, August 26th, 2024, at 6:30 PM as a virtual meeting and the city council, and in the city council chambers, and it takes effect immediately.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Ohm. Would the clerk please poll the council?
All ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you. We will now move to Agenda Item Number Three. Counselor Snell, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Council Bill Number 15 dash 2024, Anordinance Submitting a Ballot Question to the Voters of the City at the November 5th, 2024 Special Municipal Election to amend the Wheat Ridge Home Rule Charter to eliminate redundant references conformed to current statutory and case law and make other non-substantive revisions. At issue, amendments to the city charter to update and modernize the language, including provisions to remove ambiguities, clerical errors, and outdated provisions, provide additional flexibility in city operations, and ensure gender and citizenship neutrality. This ordinance sets the ballot question, ballot language for the November 5th election, which is due to the Jefferson County Clerk and Recorder on September 6th.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on first reading to set the date, time, and location for a public hearing. May I have a motion on this item, Counselor Snell?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 15 dash 2024, Anordinance Submitting a Ballot Question to the Voters of the City at the November 5th, 2024 Special Municipal Election to amend the Wheat Ridge Home Rule Charter to eliminate redundant references conformed to current statutory and case law and make other non-substantive some substantive revisions on first reading. Order it published. Public hearing set for Monday, August 26th, 2024, at 6:30 PM as a virtual meeting and in city council chambers, and it takes effect immediately.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Hoppe. Will the clerk please poll the council?
All ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you very much. We will now go to Agenda Item Number Four. Counselor Ohm, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Council Bill Number 16 dash 2024, Anordinance Amending Article Five of Chapter 26 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Concerning the City's Landscaping Requirements and Making Conforming Amendments Therewith. At issue, the proposed ordinance makes necessary updates to the City's Zoning and Development Code to modernize, clarify, and update landscape design requirements. This appeal and reenactment of the ordinance updates standards to address more water-efficient design, and it reorganizes and clarifies code to make requirements easier to understand by all users.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on first reading to set the date, time, and location for a public hearing. Counselor Ohm, may I have a motion on this item, please?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 16 dash 2024, Anordinance Repealing and Reenacting Article Five of Chapter 26 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Concerning Landscape Requirements and Making Conforming Amendments Therewith. On first reading, order it published. Public hearing set for Monday, August 26th, 2024, at 6:30 PM as a virtual meeting and in city council chambers, and that it takes effect 15 days after final publication.
We have a motion and a second by Mayor Protim Stites. Will the clerk please poll the council?
Seven ayes, one nay. Motion carries.
We will now go to Agenda Item Number Five. Counselor Larson, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. This is Council Bill Number 172024, Anordinance Amending Sections Two, 11, and 26 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Regarding Short-Term Rental District Caps, Reporting Requirements for Hosting Platforms, and Enforcement Procedures for Same. At issue, in February 2021, city council enacted legislation concerning the licensing and enforcement of short-term rentals. Since that time, staff has worked to implement the legislation by licensing STRs, collecting applicable, collecting the applicable lodgers' tax, and enforcing the codified regulations. Through the implementation of the program, both members of the council and staff identified necessary amendments to the code to improve the STR program. This ordinance amends the code based on direction received from city council on June 3rd, 2024 as follows.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on first reading to set the date, time, and location for a public hearing. Counselor Larson, may I have a motion on this item?
Yes, Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 172024, Anordinance Amending Sections Two, 11, and 26 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Regarding the Short-Term Rental District Caps, Reporting Requirements for Hosting Platforms, and Enforcement Procedures for Same. Order it published. Public hearing set for Monday, August 26th, 2024, at 6:30 PM as a virtual meeting and in city council chambers, and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Ohm. Would the clerk please poll the council?
All ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you. We will now go to Agenda Item Number Six. Counselor Weaver, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Resolution Number 36 dash 2024, Resolution Supporting an Application to the Jefferson County Space, Open Space Trails Partnership Program to Request Funding for Clear Creek Trail Concrete Improvements. At issue, the city is eligible to apply for funding from the Jefferson County Open Space Trails Partnership Program for trail-related improvement projects. The 2024 proposal is for funding to supplement the previously awarded CDOT Transportation Alternatives Program grant to replace concrete along certain segments of the Clear Creek Creek Trail. A resolution of support from city council is required to submit an application.
Thank you. This will be a resolution of the council. It is not quasi judicial. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We do. We don't want this meeting to go too short, so Karen O'Donnell is here. She has a few things to add.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. Just wanted to remind you all that we came to city council in April of 2023 to get support for a resolution to apply for the CDOT TAP grant funds, and then we were awarded those funds in the amount of $951,000 plus in May of this year. So we're just wanting to apply for Jefferson County Open Space Trails Grant Partnership dollars to supplement that 900,000 plus to be able to complete the project with, hopefully using little to none of our own city money. So that's what we're seeking support for this evening.
Okay. Thank you very much. I have no members of the public signed up to speak, so we'll go to questions from council. Are there questions of council of staff? Counselor Lars.
Thank you, Mayor, and just a real quick question. I've paged the materials, and it looks like a solid plan. I just would like to see a better description, maybe, a better map, maybe with more detail. And you're probably not there yet, but when you do, I'd like to have that available, because I do have some questions about where the descriptions are not very concise.
Absolutely.
A map, I'm big on maps, so if you provide a map, I'd be grateful.
Great, absolutely. Just to clarify, too, we'd be doing design in 2025 and construction in 2026, well, we will be regardless of this application. So there'll definitely be more information that we can share.
Thank you. Counselor Holtein?
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations on getting these funds. This is good use of the TAP funding. We just keep getting all of these awards, like, just so grateful for our city. I do have a question. So looking at the map that was provided in the descriptions, one of the segments that I know needs attention, not because of width, but just because of pavement condition, is that portion that is at about, it's the section that's along the private property, and it is east of Kipling. I would say it is, I'm trying to think of the best cross street. It's like, it's west of Garrison, and there's, it goes around a little curve, and it comes right up against private property. It's where I found the big gigantic snapping turtle last year. And it's, it's just got a lot of spalling, and the pavement is just, it's just not in good condition. And it's just, I would say it's probably about a 16-foot section, but I just, if there is space in this for consideration of that, I don't think we can expand it any because of the riverbank and the private property, but the condition is just notably, like, poor in that specific location. And I didn't know if that had been considered or not, or if that's on your list of segments of the trail that need attention.
Yeah, I'll just, I can speak to that. I know we've received an email earlier this year about that, and we're looking at how we can fund that, possibly even before this, because we recognize that's an issue. Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Thank you. Any further questions of council of staff? Okay, seeing none. Counselor Weaver, may I have a motion on this item?
You may, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Resolution Number 36 dash 2024, Resolution Supporting an Application to the Jefferson County Open Space Trails Partnership Program to Request Funding for Clear Creek Trail Concrete Improvements.
We have a motion and a second by Mayor Protim Stites. Is there discussion upon the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
All ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you. With that, we will go to Agenda Item Number Seven. Counselor Hoppe, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to approve an agreement with and subsequent payments to ECI Site Construction Management, Inc. for the construction of the Phase Two Green at 38th Project for a total amount of $5,974,155, with a contingency of $300,000 for a total not-to-exceed amount of $6,274,155. At issue, ECI Site Construction Management, Inc. was, sorry, $6,274,155. At issue, ECI Site Construction Management, Inc. was retained in May 2023 as the construction manager and general contractor for the Green at 38th Project. Subsequently, they were awarded the contract in March 2024 for Phase One of the project to relocate the Stevens Elementary parking lot. Approval of this agreement with ECI for Phase Two of the Green at 38th Project will complete the project with the construction of the park adjacent to the new Stevens Elementary parking lot.
Is there a second? Oh, well, that was the interd- I'm sorry, I'm.
He's like going.
Okay, okay, we're, okay. We're, this will be a, this will be a motion to the council. It is not quasi judicial. Mr. Goff, do we have any further staff presentation on this item?
We do have a representative from ECI here this evening. If you have any questions, then Karen and myself, of course, but just a quick update. I'll turn off Karen if she has anything to add, but we're very excited that the parking lot Phase One portion has been completed on time, on schedule, on budget.
And on budget.
So very excited about Phase Two. And maybe, Ian, if you have a couple seconds, maybe just kind of tell us where we're at and what the plans are for Phase Two, if you don't mind. And, yeah, one note I'll make to why Ian's walking up, I wasn't there, but Karen Heard, our school district representative, who was inspecting the parking lot, was thrilled and asked ECI to do all their work for them, for the school districts. So I think that was a pretty good sign of some quality work, especially coming from this specific individual. But Ian, do you want to give us just a little bit of update on the, maybe the parking lot and where we're at for Phase Two?
Perfect. Parking lot will be open for schools starting on Thursday, so all parents, everybody will have a brand-new parking lot, fully striped, lit, and ready to go for school, including all the landscaping. So we were able to hit all the target dates there. The goal then is to roll into Phase Two and immediately start on the earthwork and utilities and rolling in, so really no downtime. So that way, we're, we're saving on any potential costs of stabilizing the site in between projects and on those lines. So this timing works out real nice to roll into Phase Two. We're in the final, final phase of design, working through final permitting, and we're set to get going here within the next week or two, and with your approval.
Thank you very much. I have no members of the public signed up to speak on this, so we'll go to questions from council. Counselor Larson?
Thank you, Mayor. Two real quick questions for staff. This guaranteed maximum contract, are these common?
Yes, they are common. I'm not sure how many other projects, I think Prospect we used it for, didn't make Prospect Park. Was that a guaranteed maximum?
I believe so.
I believe so, yeah. We typically, we have typically used this. I don't know if Ian's got any comments on that or not, if what you see, they do a lot of work with school districts and cities.
So 90% of our contracts are GMP formats and delivery methods on that front. So it's a very typical, especially, it gains a lot of, you're able to work through a lot of upfront issues, and then lock in maximum pricing, and then work through the project as a team, rather than kind of the strict bid-build formatting. So a lot of, lot of our contracts almost exclusively are CMGC and then GMP formats.
No, and I can appreciate that, but it certainly looks like you ironed out a lot of the details in advance, which, you know, you have to appreciate. The other question though for staff would be, is, is there an assurance that the completion date, is there anything built in there that says if it's not completed by, the city has any recourse?
Yeah, I think we're estimating a June, June-ish completion date. I can't remember. Dol, do you remember, Karen, do you remember of any stipulation in there on a, we did on the parking lot, just because it was so important to have it open before school, but.
I believe, I believe the completion date was June, June 27th.
June 27th for the park construction.
Yeah.
And we. June 27th of '25.
Correct.
Yeah. Now that, yeah.
And we included provisions for, you know, weather delays and things like that.
Right.
So it could be extended for those reasons.
Yeah, great, thank you. Additional questions? Counselor Holtein?
Thank you. Along the lines of Councilmember Larson's inquiry, what does completion mean? Is it, I mean, I used to be in construction, and there were different, different versions of complete on a building. So completion on this project means everything's done. Is there, is there like phase completion, where there's like little things that might still be coming in? I know sometimes with landscaping, there's holdups. So just if we do run into, like, weather delays, and it's starting to impact like our planned access to the green next year, is there a possibility of, like, some of the last pieces of completion not prohibiting us from being able to use the green? Does that question make sense? Sorry.
It does make sense. I don't know that I'm the best person to answer it, but I'll do my best, because I can give Prospect as an example. We, we met our date of substantial completion and had our ribbon cutting, but there were still a few things that needed to be done within the next year. And some of those things are seasonal. You can't do them, we couldn't do them in October. They had to be done in the spring, but the park was open and available to the community. So I would see that kind of being the same way, and maybe you can speak to it, Ian. The park will be open and available once we meet that date of substantial completion, but there could be some items that need to be taken care of after the fact. You might have better examples.
Yeah, absolutely. We look at substantial completion as it's able to be used for its intended use. And so as long as we meet that requirement, it's, it's safe and it's able to be used as its intended use. There may be a few miscellaneous things to put a bow on it for final completion that may be weather-dependent. Luckily, we're finishing in the summer, so we have a lot less restrictions on that front. So we are, we're in good shape on that front.
Great. Thanks for the clarification.
Additional questions? I had a question. So we have, we have a GMP, a guaranteed maximum price of 6.2? Where do you think we're going to end up at the end of the day? You've had certain time here to sharpen your numbers up.
Less than 6.2.
Great answer.
Let me, I have a follow-up to that.
Yes.
How much less?
How much less? Ideally, the, we work through the process of being able to work to a budget on the design pieces. So there's elements in there that we can add additional value to the park as the, as we work through that. So there may be a time, so it's, it's not necessarily that we're giving that money back. It's more of, okay, we're able to buy additional benches and chairs and supplement things to add value to the park. So there's an element of that. And, but ideally, my goal is to give back that entire contingency if it's not used on value-add items. That, that's our goal, and that's to give back to the CMGC process. Why we like going through that process, because we're able to really dive deep and try to head off issues ahead of time. Some things you just, you just can't figure out until you stick a shovel in the ground. Luckily, we've already stuck a shovel in the ground. So, you know, we're working through a lot of those issues on Phase One, and so we're looking forward to a pretty clean Phase Two on that front.
Okay, great. And we're, we're working on a cost plus, a cost plus a fee on this project? And is the, is that correct? Is this a cost of the work plus a fee?
It, it's not. It's just a straight cost of, or straight GMP schedule value. It, it's not. It's just a straight cost of, or straight GMP schedule values. So we haven't broken out a fee specifically. We have general conditions broken out separately, but not a strict fee.
Okay. So you build, you build the cost, your subcontractor costs as they come in at cost?
Correct.
And then how do you, how does the general contractor recover a fee on that?
We recover a fee. Our, so we're unique from a general contract standpoint. We perform a lot of the earthwork and subgrade prep. So there's our, that's where we build in our cover, recovery on our equipment and overhead is those line items within the contract. So we'll self perform those contract, or those portions of the contract. In addition to that, we have general conditions set that handles the management and the overhead for the specific job and have that lined, lined itemed out in our schedule values. So if we, if we're able to deliver the project early, then you're not paying the full duration on the GCs, things on those lines. So we can provide value through that process on that thing.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions?
Mayor, I was just gonna add that we, we did go through a fairly extensive value engineering process to get within the budget that we felt we had. So if it does come in under budget, like as Ian mentioned, hopefully we can maybe add some of those things back. Mainly was we decreased some of the furniture. We went from one fire pit, or two fire pits to one. We changed some of the facade on the pavilions, some of the concrete work. Trying to think what else. Signage, we're only gonna have one park sign instead of two. We're not gonna have unfortunately, an electronic message board that we wanted to. It's too expensive, but it's gonna be designed so we can add it later if we come, come find the money. So, yeah, so hopefully if that come in under, we can add some of those things back. Absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Hearing none, may I have a motion on this item? Councilor Hoppe?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve an agreement with the subsequent payments to ECI Site Construction Management, Inc. for the construction of Phase Two Green at Thirty-Eighth Project for a total amount of $5,947,155, with a contingency of $300,000 for a total not to exceed the amount of $6,274,155.
We have a motion and a second by Mayor Protem Stites. Is there discussion on the motion? Uh, Councilor Hoppe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Six years and four months ago, we engage, we had staff engage in, with a landscape design firm to develop conceptual designs for this green. This has been a very long project. It's taken a lot of discussion and a lot of time and bringing a lot of people to the table to get it to where it's at. And I am absolutely thrilled to see it come to our table tonight. And I really hope everybody will join me in voting yes for it.
Thank you. Councilor Ohm?
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to thank staff and all the current and past council members for bringing us forward. I know myself and my family and all my constituents are really excited to have this come into the area. And, and I think it's gonna be, you know, a real catalyst for the businesses surrounding that area. So thank you very much.
Any additional discussion on the motion? Councilor Holtein?
Thanks, Mayor. To Councilmember Hoppe's point, I just also want to recognize just the complexity of getting to where we are. It's involved, you know, another park in our city, dealing with the school district. You know, it's, it's, it's took a long time. We did have a pandemic. But I just really want to recognize the perseverance and the ingenuity of our city to try and make it happen. And also again, our competitiveness, getting some grant funding for it. But, you know, Patrick likes to say in Wheat Ridge, we can do anything. And, you know, there is a version of the green that could have happened six years ago, and it would not have been this spectacular. So I think the time it's taken in our, you know, the leadership on this dais and staff working with the district on the land swap with the parking lot and, you know, just everything it's taken. I just really want to recognize that, that perseverance. And I cannot wait for this to be ready next summer. District Two feels very, very fortunate and grateful. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
All ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Okay, that concludes our agenda items. I will go to, uh, City Managers Matters.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, speaking of the green, we're gonna have a project kickoff this Saturday, 10:00 AM. Kind of a celebration of the parking lot, but also a kickoff for the start of the construction of the green. Some games and food and all kinds of things going on. So hopefully you can come out for that. Just found out about an hour ago or two hours ago, unfortunately, the severe weather network is closing its doors. So they will not be providing severe weather network lodging this winter. So we will be working closely with our navigation team and our partners in the county to make sure that we have the vouchers needed to provide sheltering during cold weather this winter. So with that, that's all I got.
Okay, thank you. City Attorneys Matters, Mr. Goff?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. We will go to elected officials matters. Let's start with Councilor Snell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that a lot of us will mention this, but I just wanted to give a ton of kudos to the Carnation Festival Board and all the volunteers. It was a fantastic weekend and lots of, lots of fun, great attendance. And I know a lot of folks didn't get a lot of sleep this weekend. So very, very appreciative to them. It's such a special time in our community. So lots of fun at the parade and then at the festival. And then after Carnation Festival starts art drop. So coming up, starting next week, the Cultural Commission is presenting the art drop again. So if you don't already follow the Wheat Ridge Cultural Commission on social media, please do, because that's how you get the clues. And it's like a great scavenger hunt around Wheat Ridge. They'll post clues, you go, and you might get a great piece of art that's created by a Wheat Ridge artist. So get ready for art drop. Thank you. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Councilor Holtein?
Thank you, Mayor. So this Thursday at Happiness Gardens, which is looking very happy, the sunflowers. Like if you are seriously having a bad day, go over to Happiness Gardens. You will leave smiling. There is a really cool free program that's a partnership that is the turning to dry land farming. Dry land farming is a sustainable form of farming that has low impact on the environment. It is from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, and it is the power of juniper ash. So they, it's a partnership with Nerissa Rabera, did I say her name correctly? Who is doing some really cool native, native gardening practices at Happiness Gardens. And she has a plot that she's gonna be converting to dry land farming. So highly recommend people go. It is a working session, so wear your closed toed shoes, bring your gloves, and be part of what makes Happiness Gardens a really special place in our community. And then I just wanted to share a story. I was distributing the flyers for our annual block party, and my neighbor had a young man who's been working, who worked all weekend to kind of clean up the front yard. And so as I was delivering the flyer, I was chatting with the young man a little bit, in part because I was curious if he was possibly available to come to my house next, and he is, thank goodness. And, and I got to talk to him a little bit more, and he, he just told me a really beautiful story that I want to share here, that his mom is one of our residents at the Vance Street project that we did the affordable housing. And he, when I said I was with the city, he, he hugged me, and he just could not say enough good things about what the city has done for his family to provide housing. And his mom had been really struggling finding housing, and Cory just like kept with her and followed up and made sure that she had enough rent, because she was in a place that she couldn't afford to stay while they, she was waiting for Vance Street. And Cory made sure that her rent was paid, and they got her moved in. And her quality of life and her health have just improved significantly since she's moved in there. Anthony is this young man's name. He just could not stop talking about what an amazing city this is. And it was just really, and he's just a super, just bright, engaging young guy. And the fact that his mom's in a better place frees him up to do more, because it was a lot of his time to help with his mom. And so we've really had just a tremendous impact on two people and just someone I happened to meet while walking through my neighborhood. And I just want to recognize that, you know, Cory gets a lot of kudos in that story, just his perseverance. But that we as a city care about everyone who lives here and are taking that level of care and attention to people who need it. We don't always know what impact it has, so when we get these little stories, it's just a real gift. And so I just want to thank my peers, because you are part of that, and thank staff for what they do for that. And it just, we have a lot of those stories in our community, and I just really wanted to share that one and give a shout out to Anthony. And if anyone wants a hardworking young man to come clean up their yard a little bit, let me know, because he is just absolutely the hardest worker and just an absolute delight. So thank you. I see one hand raised. All right, all right, thanks. That's what I got.
Always a take. Thank you so much, Councilor. Councilor Larson?
Thank you, Mayor. And I would certainly like to add my compliments to the Wheat Ridge Carnation Festival Committee, the staff, all the volunteers for another festival that will certainly be hard to top. And then the other thing is tomorrow, August 13th, is International Lefthanders Day. So let's stick together.
All right. I'll tell my wife. All right, thank you. Councilor Dozeman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I have been honored and privileged to be a part of the Carnation Festival Board since 2015 and have chaired the parade for, this was my la, my eighth year. And wonderful 55th Annual Celebration of the Incorporation of the City of Wheat Ridge. Really appreciate all of the volunteers on the board and, and that come the weekend of. It's, you know, a tireless job and, and it's, I was sitting in the crowd Saturday night listening to the, one of the bands and just looking around at everybody having a good time and enjoying the festival and the music with their friends and their family. And it just, you know, reignites why you do what you do. And I really want to thank all of my peers on council, mayor, and city staff for helping us make this possible. So Parks and Rec, Public Works, Wheat Ridge Police. We would not be able to do it without them and also without the significant funding contribution from the city that allows us to put this on each and every year. Had a wonderful time at the car show, the circus, was really bummed out about the fireworks, as were a lot of people, but the Jeffco Firebrand was in place and applied to Wheat Ridge. And so that was pretty unfortunate, but hopefully we can bring it back next year and have a bigger and better show. So look forward to being a part of that again next year.
Thank you so much. Councilor Weber?
Thank you. Let's see. The GOAT report is that the goats will be at Lewis Meadows for maybe a couple more weeks, and then we will move them back to a right of way next to Prospect Valley. So that's the GOAT report. But I do also want to invite everyone who's interested in large animal evacuation and emergencies. There will be an event, I believe it's out on the Wheat Ridge website at this point. But it is an event that will be at Five Fridges Farm and is sponsored by District Three, so, so Mr. Stites and I, as well as Rocky Mountain Farmers Union. And we will have the emergency manager for Jefferson County, as well as Commander Hunt from the Wheat Ridge Police to help us understand what happens in an emergency like a flood or a fire when you have large animals that can't be housed, such as beyond dogs. So your goats, your chickens, your sheep, your horses. So if you have friends and neighbors with those larger animals, the first thing to know is they can't go to a regular shelter. And so there's a different plan that, that goes into effect. And I would just encourage anyone who has an interest in either helping with that evacuation or has animals to come to the event. The mayor will be introducing our, our guests, and it will be just a short, hopefully fun, informational, on how we work together as a community to, to help people with large animals. So even if you don't have large animals, but you'd like to help with the effort, we will also be taking a list of people who in a crisis can, would, are willing to volunteer and just help with all of those things. So that'll be September 7th at 4 o'clock. And like I said, all of that information will be listed. It's for Wheat Ridge residents wide. So with big animals or with just an interest in helping out. Thanks.
Looking forward to it. Thank you. Councilor Ohm?
Thank you, Mayor. I've only heard good things about the Carnation Festival this year, and I was away. And as I came back on Sunday, I noticed there were so many cars around Anderson Park. And that can only mean one thing, that it really was a success. I, I didn't know anything about the fireworks. I, maybe next year, things will go a little bit better, but it's, you know, it's been dry, so I, I kind of understand that. But it's, I think it's, you know, Carnation Festival's been going so long and, and really thank Councilor Dozeman for all our hard work and all the other staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Hoppe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I will say, the Carnation Festival is the best way to end the summer. It's also the number one reminder that school's starting soon. Back to School Night at Wheat Ridge High School is on Wednesday at, from 5:30 to 7:30. Wait, is that the 14th? Yeah, Wednesday. And, and the elementary schools are starting Wednesday and Thursday, so keep that in mind. You'll see a lot of little walkers and little bikers making their way to school. I went to the art show this year. Well, I've gone to the art show a few, a few times, but this year I picked up some fantastic art for my new office. And I just want to say congratulations to one of my best friends, Chad Har, who won Best of Show this year. Congratulations, Chad.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Stites?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before the festival on Thursday, I think it was Thursday, Mr. Goff and the mayor and a few staff members and I got to join Commissioner Kerr and Commissioner Kraft Tharp in touring the Makerspace, which I know we've all been to, but has changed actually since the ribbon cutting. So if you haven't been there, they've, they've actually done some remodeling and stuff. They've done a lot of great work in there. So, but the commissioners were really tickled about what's, what's going on there. And they were already talking about the businesses and then, and things that can come out of there. So that is a huge asset to our community and something that we should definitely be promoting and do what we can for that. The Carnation Festival this year, again, is, is always amazing. And thank you to Joe Demont and the entire board, Councilor Dozeman. The parade was, was awesome, and I was happy. Personal achievement, martial arts, won Best Business again this year. It's been a year off, but we've, we've won a couple of times. But I, you know, for a lot of personal reasons, my history in Wheat Ridge and everything, the Carnation Festival means a lot to my family and to me. And then it's, it's an emotional time for me, because, you know, obviously, family. But it, it's really cool to see how the community comes together. And I think that was the intent when it, when it was started 55 years ago. The incorporation of Wheat Ridge was something that really was hard on, on the community and everything. And just seeing the people come together over the weekend and seeing friends and people, former council member Larry Merkel, and, and some of the, the older people that were on council when I was a kid, that still pay attention and still know what's going on. It's, this is a fantastic community, and that is, and that shows every single year in the Carnation Festival. So thank you to the board and everybody who's put in that time. It, it brings our community together. So I really appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'll just say, you know, kind of join in on all of the, what are, what are the counselors have said. I thought it was sort of the best festival, the best parade, and really the way the festival is laid out. I don't know, we got a break in the weather, you know, for, for a good deal, deal of it. So it was very comfortable to be out there, but it seemed like everybody was really having a good time. And, and we really have some, some great enjoyment in our community. And we have, you know, great, what makes our community great are the people that, that work here. Our, our city staff, our police, our Public Works, our Parks Department, our admin staff, all of the, all of the folks that, in the festival committee, and everybody comes together. It's really a, it's really a small town hometown fair, and I think we did a great job, and I'm, I'm really proud to be part of that. I, I have a couple of questions. I see that the, we're, we're still looking for the plate to, to show up. So hopefully we'll have that in Council St. Chambers soon. And then, and then I'm, I'm looking to see what, what happens next for our, for our plate. So we'll, you know, that is a big question, and we, you know, we can, we have some answers, but we don't have them all. That's okay. But, you know, we'll need a new, you know, we'll, we'll see about that. And then, let's see. I wanted to, you know, to let everybody know, as you've heard, the school is starting. So please drive safely and slowly through our streets. We have a lot of young, young people that'll be walking to school and, and really excited about the new year. So please drive safely and slowly through our, through our town. We, we want you, everyone to come home at the end of the day. So if there is no more business to come before us, we will be here next week, right, in a study session. no more business to come before us, we will be here next week, right, in a study session. And then we will have, uh, one more, one more week and then a little, a little time off. So we haven't had enough time off yet this summer. So if there's, if there's no more business to come before the council, then we will stand adjourned. Thank you.